Going to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Quarterly Budget Workshop to order. Will call, please.
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Here.
Commissioner London?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greitap?
Here.
Chairperson Bowman?
Here. Stand for the pledge.
Pledge and Ladies, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have an addition deletions to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to move that we would delete item five, Resolution Approving the Architect's Contract for the Blue Water Area Convention Center.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So move.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Moving on, item number two, citizens be heard. Are there any citizens wishing to address the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, we're going to get into item number three. Actually, I think what I'd like to do is have Bill and Gary just kind of explain all the above to how we got here today and what's going to be coming before us and so on and so forth. I don't know if Bill or Gary, you guys want to tag team this?
You mind if I get started?
No.
Sure, I'll jump in.
Jump in wherever you need to. This, obviously, it's been a while coming to get us to the point where we're at today. A big part of what we needed to wait for is to be sure that Mr. Wheeler and his group was going to be able to put all the financing together, be ready to close, have all the money readily available. And roughly a month ago, we were, came to the opinion that it was definite that they were going to be able to put this together. There were a lot of issues. One big one was the USDA Rural Development Agency Guarantee for the loan. It took a while to get that straightened out because there's only so much money allocated to those. But the federal government and the state both reviewed the project, supported it, and as a result, those guarantees came through. What we did then is we had John Wheeler, Roger Reistorf, I think is how you pronounce it, Reikhoff, sorry. He came, so it's Wheeler, the developer, Reikhoff, who's going to be the overseer of the construction of the project. We had them come in, we had engaged Dave French, very capable local architect who's built performing arts centers, big buildings, to kind of be our eyes and ears because Bill and I are neither builders or architects. He was there. We flew in David Griesel, who's the specialty architect, who's designed many, many, many mid and smaller sized convention centers. And Bill, obviously, was there, I was there, might have been a couple other people. But anyways, what we ended up doing is going through what the concept was for the design of the convention center. So that would be the schematic design which you see attached to the construction manager contract. And honestly, we weren't happy with the state of where it was at. We weren't confident that enough communication had been done with Bill Kruger and David Griesel, very little had, to ensure that the concept of what would be built met the requirements of the recommendation of the CSL study so that we would be able to hit the target market that we want to attract to create the economic impact for the county, the area as a whole. So what happened is, from that meeting, Griesel and Jim Horman, who's the lead architect who was also there from Design Plus, left and they went to Grand Rapids to Horman's office. And they spent about a day and a half coming up with a concept, or actually, five or six of them, to get this convention center to meet the recommendations of CSL. There were further refinements, further conference calls, and a lot of input from CSL, from Bill Kruger, to make sure we were hitting exactly what he was recommending. And it ended up turning out to be around 5,000 square feet bigger than what was originally contemplated, although that was a rough figure from his study. But we had to make sure all the areas that were needed in the facility were covered. So we got that done. Then it was a lot of cost out work that also had to be done. We got that completed. And one big area, I'll say, of contention was the cost of the site work because that is a big ticket item. Originally, a lot of it had been shifted, we felt, the county way, which I understand they're going to want to shift as much their, our way as they can and vice, well, semi vice versa. I mean, we wanted it to be fair. And what we did is we brought the engineers in, we had them cost out every area of the improvements, parking lots, sewer, water, sewer and water relocation, demolition, all that kind of stuff. Then we allocated where that would go.
Tetra Tech.
At Tetra Tech were the engineers, they're local engineers that we initially brought into the project and they were hired by the developer. They really did a good job. And as a result of that, a significant amount of money, it was actually about a half a million dollars, was reduced from the county side of what they had proposed. And we feel that that's a very fair allocation, what we have now, which is Exhibit D to the contract that's before you, the construction manager contract. So once we got all of that done, then we had to finalize the construction manager contract, which you have before you, the architect contract, which we're close to finalizing, we'd hoped to have tonight, but obviously, we didn't make it. And the budgets have been put together. I feel very confident that this will come in, we will produce a quality facility for the $9 million all-in budget that's been discussed all the way along. And what we did is we sent all of this to David Griesel and Bill Kruger to have them review all of it, Bill Kaufman did. And what Bill asked them to do was to issue a written report. You know, we wanted their assurance that this would meet a quality facility, proper design, all the pieces were there, and would meet the target that Kruger was suggesting that we needed to hit to get conventions here. And you have the written reports from both of them. And we told them, if you don't think it does, tell us and we'll go back to the drawing board because we're not going ahead until this is right, until you can give us assurance in writing that it's right. So you have their reports. And finally, that brought us here today. There were some additional items that Bill and purchasing worked on, like the general conditions that are attached, those were finalized yesterday and today. And that's the package that's before you tonight. In terms of the closing, they were going to close tomorrow, but there was too much happening at the wire, such as this meeting tonight. And I think the closing's going to be, is it fourteenth or?
Tuesday or Wednesday.
Tuesday or Wednesday, I think it's Wednesday. And honestly, I'm a little more comfortable with that because we're obviously reviewing a lot of documents in terms of the condominium project, and all of those things are well done. I did the condo documents, they revised them a little bit. We have reciprocal easements for everybody, there are things that need to be done, which are done, but we want to obviously double, triple check everything. So basically, that's it. We're finally ready to move ahead with this. And I firmly believe, talking to David Griesel, Bill Kruger, and reading the reports, that we will get a very high-quality facility that'll enable us to attract a lot of conventions and economic impact to our county.
Did you have anything you wanted?
Yeah, if there's, just a couple of things I want to emphasize that Mr. Fletcher covered. And probably the most important is the validation of the design that we've come up with. And again, keep in mind, it's just a schematic at this point, but there has been a lot of talk about some of the details related to the finish of the product to ensure that we do hit the market that we're shooting for. And as Gary has explained, we have added slightly to the square footage of the facility, but it is well within our existing budget. In speaking with Convergence Design, who's Dave Griesel, and with CSL, Bill Kruger, we made it clear to them that in putting together their letter or their memo, we want the good, we want the bad, we want a straightforward opinion on what you think. There was certainly no editing done. We accepted their report, I think it's dated the second of August, and you have it in the same format that we received it. They wanted to make sure that there are some issues related to the site. You know, it is a tight site that we have there. And certainly, we've got to work within the bounds of the existing structure as well as the right-of-way for the bridge. But we believe that we've come up with a design that enables that to happen. Certainly, some of the earlier designs would have been a real challenge for fit, but as a result of getting all three of those architects together, they came up with a very creative solution to some of the challenges we faced, and we ended up with a facility slightly larger than what we were looking for. Again, we ran it by Bill Kruger. He advised us that we needed to up some of the finishes, the quality on the finishes. The construction manager went back and reworked some of the numbers and some of the estimates. And we were still able to come in within budget as a result of even upgrading some of the quality of the materials. So we feel very strongly that the existing design scheme as well as the budget has been validated by those experts that we set out to hire early on in the process. As Mr. Fletcher pointed out, there were some issues related to the construction budget, but we were able to work all of those out and actually result in some savings to the county, some significant savings. One of the things that I feel we've been able to accomplish over the last couple of weeks with this very intense interaction, we've had numerous telephone conference calls, flying people in, some of the experts in to sit with us and spend time. I think we've really capitalized, monopolized Mr. Fletcher's time over the last couple of weeks on this project. But I think we've got a much stronger relationship with the construction manager than we did six, eight weeks ago. They understand what our needs are, they understand what the limits are, they understand that, you know, we've got a good group of people working on this project to ensure that we come in on time, under budget or on budget, and that we're going to end up with the facility that Mr. Kruger and Mr. Griesel really feels we need to produce. So I certainly feel very comfortable with our relationship with the construction manager at this point. We are working through issues with the architect and their agreement. Just spent about an hour and a half on the phone with them this afternoon. A number of emails and adjustments to contracts have been going back and forth, and we think over probably the next couple of days, we'll be able to finalize our contract with the architect. So with that in that said...
I'm just going to make one quick comment.
Yeah, I had two other things I wanted to say because I forgot. Two other things. In terms of due diligence, everything we talked about, we also did the environmental due diligence, phase one, phase two, and baseline assessment. Also, a survey on city records of all the utilities that exist there, everything that needs to be retired that might come up. We had borings done on our part of the site. All the title work has been checked. And the other thing is this contract meets the county objective to have a significant percentage of local employment, both labor and materials, so that our money is being invested here in our community, creating jobs. That's it.
Just, I'm sorry.
Just to re, to build on something that Mr. Fletcher just mentioned, I think is important to the community, and that's the local jobs and the local material. I've heard a lot of comments out there about how the project will be bid. Each of the, each of the elements of the project will be bid separately with the assistance of the construction manager, the architect, the civil engineer, again, depending on what the discipline is. They'll help us prepare the bid documents, and they will go out just like any other bid document that the county does. We'll use the exact same process. They will help us analyze the bids, and then those contracts will come to you along with the bid analysis, and you will decide who those contracts go to. We are shooting for 70% local labor and 70% local content of material.
Now, just one comment I wanted to make. I know when we started this process, we obviously, we went and got Bill Kruger, who we felt was very capable, CSL. Bill then put us in touch with Dave Griesel, who is arguably one of the top guys as far as designing convention centers. We brought Dave French in, I know many of you know Dave French, Dave's architect, have done multiple projects between Bill Kaufman, Gary Fletcher, then Mike Rosso from Tetra Tech's also engaged in the project. I really, I feel very good about the team that we have assembled, so to speak, on our end. I don't know if we could put a better lineup together, so to speak. So with that, we, as commissioners, I mean, we don't need to be involved in what the front door of the convention center looks like, those types of things, that's not our MO. But I feel good about, like I said, the group we have in place. And for that, I'm going to open up questions.
I would, I just have two short questions. The additional square footage that we have is about 5,000. Are you counting that abbey space that the hotel operates as part of it? Okay, so that's in addition, which we can use, we're working it out with the hotel.
Yes.
Okay. And this is for anybody that can, what is a movable air wall?
What, they are the panels that, literally, when you move them, they feel like they're riding on air. So even though it's going to divide into thirds a building that's, I don't know how many feet wide and 30 feet high, it literally feels like...
So you can have three halls out, but that's what an air wall is.
Exactly.
Okay. It had to be something like that. And then I just want to follow up with a comment that, very similar to what Jeff just said, that as a commissioner, and I don't know about a lot of this type of stuff, but when, when I have people like Bill Kaufman and Gary Fletcher working, and then Griesel comes in, and Dave French comes in, and Bill Kruger comes in, and they tell us this stuff, and these are, these are the best guys in the industry, it makes it a little bit easier for us to sit down and to make a decision. And when my decision and my vote comes tonight, I will feel very confident that I know what I've been talking about. And so I thank all those people who have worked on this. Made it a lot easier.
I guess I'll just start on wanting to go around the table of comments. David?
I just, I mean, I guess three questions answered, and pretty much I got a lot of things answered. And it'll be on page five. And I understand the construction manager may not be the one that's required to ascertain that the drawings and specifications are in accordance with the applicable laws. Then it goes down to notice and compliance with the laws. But if he isn't the one, as, and he's the one that's going to be dictating the construction as the construction manager, who does make sure that it's in compliance with the applicable laws? If he doesn't, who does?
Well, the, this says that they shall comply. And then the actual checking that occurs is done by the architect. They double-check that, plus the inspectors that are on the job. And the other thing that we'll probably be doing is keeping Dave French with us as a double-check on all of this. And we made it clear through this process, and they weren't happy to hear this, but we said if this wasn't right, it wasn't priced right, it wasn't designed right, we would walk. I told Mr. Wheeler that more than once, so.
And just, who would be responsible for the applicable law?
If I could add to that as well, in speaking with the architect this afternoon, and what the next phase and several phases after that of his proposal includes, the very next phase that he would be involved with if we engage him, is doing just that. They do the research to find out what the current rules are, state of Michigan, the local community, and the rules they may have.
We're going to hold the architect responsible for that.
And he will ensure that as he develops his design, he's taken into consideration all the local building, fire, mechanical, those codes.
And then the inspectors double-check that.
Right.
Would it also be logical that when you get a building permit, site plan approval, all of that will be reviewed by the, I'm assuming the city issues the building permit?
Yes, they do.
On page seven, and maybe it's just the way I read it, paragraph 3.1.3, just the very first sentence, "The owner shall establish and periodically update the owner's budget for the project." So the, which is, the owner is the county. The owner, owner's going to oversee and his own work?
No, no. What we do, there's a budget attached to this with, that's associated with a guaranteed price. As you go through the project, you know it, I know it, we've all built things, seen them built, whatever, things change. So we will periodically, and we have a very good contingency here. This is not some skinny contingency that's going to mean failure. But periodically, as you go through the process, you may want to add something, delete something, change something. So you'll periodically update that budget like you would any other, like you do, your budget here, exactly the same process.
And the last one's fairly simple, too. It's just explanation on page nine. 5.1.4, "State's rental rates for the construction manager-owned equipment shall not exceed, nonapplicable, percent of the standard rate paid at the place of the project." Why is that line even in there if it's owned by the?
It's just an NA. I mean, we could as easily strike it out, but they put NA because they're not supplying any equipment, because they're not going to act. Sometimes what happens is, construction managers, like I worked with Barton Mallow a lot, and they have certain areas of the work they will self-perform if they're competitive and the owner wants them to do it, and then you would reimburse them. Orion is just strictly a construction manager. They have no equipment they'll bring to the site and no, no workforces other than...
It's like a non-sentence.
It's a non-issue.
That's all I got.
Terry?
Thank you, Jeff. Under the, under the Gressel document, Bill or Gary, they had, he puts a number of things in here which appears to be changes, assumptions, clarifications, and convergence, is what he called them. I guess, maybe I can just ask a general question. Are these all in the contract? Or was there some things in there that weren't, that we disagreed with him, or, because there's a number of things here on page two and three of his document, I just wonder, are they all in the contract?
All of, no. Well, all of these are part of the budget. So what he did is Griesel came here, he did the schematic, and each one of these items was discussed. And all of those were conveyed to both the other architect and the construction manager. So those will all be part of the basis of design for this project, and the construction manager knows it.
So basically, what you're saying, that those are all in the contract?
Yeah. And he just wants to make everybody...
Or in the project.
Yeah, exactly. And he wants to make everybody aware, these are all of the things we discussed that have to be an integral part of this project.
He's a great example because I was part of the meetings with him. He said if you got X amount of square foot, you need X amount of loading doors in and out because you're going to have so many things. You can't do it with two, you need it with three, for example. There's just some industry standards, norms, those types of things that you need to be able to hit. And he was, he was obviously a wealth of knowledge on that.
Had we not brought him in, it would have been a major mistake, major mistake. He really...
Like, one of the things that says a new parking for the restaurant on the east side of the site would be adapted to the convention center plan, not vice versa. And I guess my question right away would be, would this block any vision of being inside the building if there was parking? I don't know.
No. It'll be, if they build it at all, and I have to tell you, they wanted the county to pay for part of that, we told them not one cent. But that'll all be dropped below grade, which is what makes it so expensive. So that every, anybody sitting in the restaurant or in the, in the pre-meeting area in the convention center will see over it right to the river.
Commissioner London, all of these, as Mr. Fletcher has indicated, all these issues have either been addressed and included in the contract, or there are things, you know, we can look at item D under four, the cross-booking agreement. That's something that when we get to the point of developing the agreement with the hotel, this will certainly be included in it. We've already talked with the owners, they know it's important, they're on board with it. But it's certainly not part of this particular contract. But you look at some of these others, like I, it is included there.
But he called them assumptions and clarifications, I was just curious and all. Were they all in there, or would they be coming in the project?
They're either in or coming, yes.
That's it for now, Jeff.
Howard?
A couple of questions. First of all, when we did the lodge down at Columbus County Park, we did a lot of energy efficiency things in it. And where are we standing on terms of, let's say, LEED certification for this facility or environmentally, or I should say, energy efficiencies into it?
The building will be built with energy efficiency in mind. It will not be LEED certified just because of what it would add to the budget. But all of the insulation, all of the HVA systems, the heat, the cooling, all of that will be high-energy efficient systems, and it will be state-of-the-art system so that we're being environmentally friendly as well.
Okay, we have the rural loan guarantee for this. Does this mean that all of the contracts that go out will be paying prevailing wages on the work being done?
No. What it will be, well, first of all, that's not my decision to make, that's the county board's decision to make. But what the owner would try to do is, not the owner, the construction manager on behalf of the owner, would be to obtain as many bids as he can from as many local vendors and suppliers. And I asked him, he built the mire here in town, and there was a lot of union labor on that job. But generally, what you find is, you know, if you go everything prevailing wage, you could add, I don't know what the number is, 10 to 15% to the cost. But that's a decision all of you have to make, it's not my decision.
And just to clarify the question about the rural development funds, those funds are assigned to the hotel and their side of the project. We will not be receiving any rural development funds.
Oh, I know that. Just, I mean, it's certification, it's not a rural guaranteed funds, it's a rural guarantee, period.
Correct, I'm sorry, yes.
There's a difference?
Yes.
I thought we used four and a half.
The funds actually have to come from the bank.
Correct, that's the distinction.
Yeah. Just because of the federal guarantee there, I would just...
Yeah, I missed the point of the question, but yeah. If there were federally, federal funds that came to us for this, then the answer is yes, the question is yes. But this is a guarantee of the owner's borrowing, not us.
Right.
Tim, I'm going to, can I, I'm going to put you on a spot here, too. Can you explain the USDA, no different than like an SBA or the one? Because everybody thinks that the feds are making the loan, so to speak, to them, it's just kind of...
I mean, I'm familiar with it, not, our financial institution isn't involved in it, but I'm familiar with it. We have made loans that have USDA guarantees, not this one, other loans. Typically, USDA gets involved in larger projects. Kind of the, the old rule of thumb was the SBA did the smaller deals, say, less than a million dollars. USDA did bigger projects. It has to be in a, considered in a rural area. Port Huron's considered rural, I think it's under 50,000 in population, or I think our whole county qualifies for those types of transactions. But it's a, basically, the bank applies to the USDA lending office for a guarantee. The borrower pays a fee to get that guarantee for the bank. And the assurance is that if, for some reason, the loan doesn't get paid, the bank can go to the USDA and get reimbursed for some percentage of their loss. It doesn't let the borrower off the hook, he still owes the money, but it mitigates the bank's risk.
And the banks are ultimately the ones that make the loan.
Correct.
Another interesting thing about that is, the federal government looks at the project, the business plan, the investors, all that stuff. And if, unless they can determine that it's a strong, really viable project, they obviously don't guarantee it.
Right. That gives us a little extra confidence.
Yeah. I mean, we're confident anyways. The other thing is, Hilton just granted them their franchise for Doubletree yesterday. Hilton would not back this unless they were confident it was going to succeed.
Howard, you got any more questions?
No, those are the only two.
Tim?
I just, I mean, I think I'm, might be a little ahead. Have we, have we looked, has the city seen the site plan, or they, I mean, I'm assuming site plan approval won't be a problem.
No.
So I'm assuming we need to engage them, or we will be engaging them to get site plan approval and a permit.
Yeah, we've got to get the actual final design, what the setbacks are, all that stuff, and then go for site plan approval, then after that, go for the, obviously, the building permits and so on.
And then, just for my own benefit, you know, we'll bid out electrical, plumbing, all that stuff separate. Steel, you know, I'm sure we all remember the $69 bid difference on a project locally. We're not obligated to take necessarily the lowest bid on any particular subset of work, are we?
You are not.
And then, this is kind of a, anybody know what a sewer scepter is?
Yeah. What that is, is there's now secondary, it's a shortened version of interceptor. I don't know where that came, well, I know where it came from. But anyways, what they do now, what the government requires, is secondary treatment. So you not only treat sewer, you treat water as well, the runoff. And so you have to have one of these interceptors that basically screens out the pollutants before that water gets into the water system. And that'll be out, that, this whole property will be served by that, that'll...
So it's for stormwater?
Stormwater, yeah.
Okay.
It's essentially stormwater treatment, so.
Okay, before it goes out into the river?
So it's now not just sanitary, it's stormwater, before it goes to the river.
All right. That's all I had, thank you.
Steve?
Didn't make the meeting, um, I know you had some meetings, I was in court all day, and the day I was scheduled to come in, Gary, and you had several meetings, so some of the questions you may have answered at the meeting. But this, um, construction manager contract is, the association is such that this construction manager is, um, he's not just advisory, he's contractually obligated to provide labor materials and do this project. He's the constructor of the project?
No. So, there's two ways you can go, one is a general contractor, where they are the constructor of the project. Most projects like this, like for example, all the buildings that were done in Marysville Schools were done with a construction manager. The Performing Arts Centers of the two schools here were a construction manager, all the Port Iron School Construction, Anchor Bay, whatever. And so, what happens is the construction manager acts as the owner's representative to plan the project, to oversee the quality of all the work, stage the work, plan it, get the permits, do all that kind of stuff. And then they bid it out on behalf of the owner. The difference with this one is they have also given us a guaranteed price. And they're, a lot of, most construction managers estimate prices, whatever. But if you get down to the point where you're asking them to guarantee a price in writing, they get kind of nervous. We told these folks that we would not do it without the guaranteed price contract, which is what this is.
So, this construction manager is an advisor?
They're the, no, they're, they're the manager of the project for you, so.
And there's some industry standard, Dave French helped us out a lot with-
Well, and what I did was, I went out to the, uh, the site where he drew this contract from, this AIA document from, and they had a, I, I downloaded their, um, relationship diagram to show how the relationships work between the various players. I'm trying to get a feel for that. And then they actually, these contracts, like contract number A133 is designed for certain relationships. And there's all, they've, they've got a whole panoply of contracts that fit in for architects and consultants and subcontractors. So, I'm trying to see where this fits in. It sounds like because he gave us a guaranteed price, they use this contract that might otherwise be used for a constructor. That's all I can gather from it, but, uh, I'll move on from that. So, there is no contractual obligation, that this, this construction manager isn't contractually obligated to provide labor materials? How is he constructually obligated to meet like our 70 percent local content or other policies? Is that, I didn't see that in the contract, but is he, he's bound by our St. Clair County policies in that regard?
Yeah.
Maybe I missed it?
Exactly.
That, that's just for our convention center, not in their part of the project.
That, theirs is their own, but they have also committed that they're going to use as much labor and as many, as much local labor and local suppliers as they can as well.
It's on the bottom of page four.
Yeah.
Now, is there any issue with this contract with Orion Two in that that is not a bid, put-out-for-bid contract? I know he's going to put out for bid and meet our bid policies. Is there an issue, are we justified in just giving this contract to him without bid?
And you have the right to do that, this is a professional service that they provide to oversee construction of, of this facility. I can tell you, um, mo, well, the, the school districts that we represent and other municipalities that have used construction managers do not bid them out. These fees are competitive, we made sure they were. But what they do is look for who is best suited to build this project. Well, if, if they're using somebody to do the hotel and demolition of part of the hotel to attach the convention center and doing all the site work and the sewer and the water, we actually looked at using somebody else independent, we priced it out. And we just don't think it would work in terms of coordinating all the work on the site, so.
I'm not so much looking at the decision as, is it, are we violating everyone's policies? We, it's not a policy issue for the county?
No.
They have to put it out for bid?
No.
And then Billy, you and I talked about this probably last year, about our capital improvement plan. You know, and it's got this outgoing long-term plan, this is not even on the radar, because it wasn't thought of. Do we need to do anything to, to coordinate our capital improvement plan with what we're doing with, with this? And are we doing that?
Sure, actually, the, this particular project is included in the capital improvement plan that the County Planning Commission will be hoping a, a public hearing on next, next month. So, this project was presented to the CIP Committee, yes.
This is probably realistically, what, 14, 18 months from the time we moved to-
Yeah, I mean, this capital improvement plan's been out there forever, it's just, there's certain things we've planned for and, and there's even provisions for how we're going to do other unidentified projects. I'm just trying to coordinate everything so that it, it moves all in the same direction.
I think the design phase even on this guy's is like a 90-day type of 90s.
At least.
Yeah, at least, working that piece of it and everything else. So, we're not going to run out here and close on, uh, Tuesday and jam the shovel in the ground on Wednesday.
I'd heard we're closing tomorrow, that's why I was like aghast this morning. I, you know, we had these meetings, I missed a meeting, and then we got these documents, and I know people want to move along, but it's, you know, I had been-
But, and like you said, it's going to be, it's going to be quick, you know, on the closing piece. Now, I can tell you the Baker College piece of it, she's, she's ready to jam. I don't say she, Connie, excuse my name, but they're ready to go ahead, I mean, they're ready to go tomorrow, they've got their-
Do you know why, Gary, we're focusing on this, um, this AIA document as opposed to? This seems like there's a number of providers, American Institute of Architects, Construction Associates America, Associate General Contractors of America, Design Build Institute of America. Where did this AIA document come from?
This is the American Institute of Architects, and I use a lot, I would say these documents are used on 90 percent of the projects I see.
Are you a subscriber to their form bank and all that, or did that come from someone else?
Well, I, I have the forms, all of them, but we don't have the modifiable form, you have to subscribe and pay a lot of money. So, what we did is we marked it up the way we wanted it, and they kept modifying it. This, there were probably, this is probably the seventh or eighth, eighth version.
But this is something you use internally, it didn't come from?
Oh, yeah.
This is something you came-
Yeah, absolutely, we, we told them we wanted to use AIA documents.
Actually, we've been using AIA documents for, I believe, all the Parks and Rec projects the last couple of years.
There was a number of these standards out there. Then, Gary, there's a couple of things, I noticed that section four, and section four is missing completely, compensation and payment for pre-construction phase services, that's been deleted entirely.
Yes.
Why is that?
Well, section four all gained, or all dealt with this minimum guaranteed, or maximum guaranteed price. So, it was this, it was all in there, and frankly, when they sent it to us, it was all in there. And what, we went through this whole process, and it might take four, three, four months where you get to your maximum price. And we said, "We will not agree to this without a maximum price on day one." Because what could happen is, you, you agree to the contract, you commit to the project, and you get into it, and the price is more than you thought it was going to be, then what do you do?
So, pre-construction phase service is not applicable, really?
No.
The, uh, there's also sections nine and 10 were deleted, dispute resolution and termination or suspension. Is that covered elsewhere, or we didn't need it?
Dispute resolution was arbitration, we took that out. We would want to be in court in St. Clair County if we have a dispute. And, uh, the, what was the other one? I'm sorry, that-
Termination or suspension of the document?
Yeah, the, um, there were, there are provisions in there which permit the contractor to terminate or suspend the work. And we just said, "We're, under no circumstances can you do that."
So, these were things that you actually looked at, and we pulled them out on your recommendation. So... The, um, one of the references- It's section 3.1.3, it says, uh, commentary, it says, "Owner shall establish periodic updated budget project, including budget for cost of work as defined in section 6.1.1." I can't find 6.1.1, is that some other section, or?
Yeah, I think that's one of the ones that was deleted.
Is that significant, or is that just?
No, that was the, the same issue of them, um, addressing the cost of the work, which we already have a guaranteed figure on, so that can come out of there. It just should say "cost of the work," and, and then the rest should be deleted.
So, section, section six was deleted-
By us.
Entirely, okay, I missed, okay. So, this is not a, um, what do they call it? Is this essentially, it's not a, it's not a cost of work plus fee agreement, it's a, it's a flat fee agreement?
No, what they get is a, uh, well, theirs is a fixed amount, typically-
185 or whatever that was?
180, I think it's 180, isn't it? 180, 15.
So, there's a fixed component?
Yeah, well, so there's a fixed component, and then they get reimbursed for actual onsite expenses. So, that's, you see the 65 bucks an hour. So, project superintendent's 65, and the others are broken down on the exhibit. And that's, like, every construction manager contract I see is exactly that format.
Those support services are capped at 200,000?
Yes.
The, um, is this fixed portion of it, is that part of the, is that included in the preliminary, the $9 million preliminary budget attached? Or is that in addition to that preliminary budget?
No, all, all those figures are in the 9 million.
Okay, so that, that cost for our construction managers in there?
Everything is, architect, construction manager, interest carry, legal fees.
I'm using them separately, the arco, I'm talking just our construction manager.
Right.
And then, um, this cap of $200,000 on reimbursable costs for a project manager, senior superintendent, and quality control technician, that also would be in there?
Yes, it's all in there.
Gary, do you know, what, can you tell me why they directed out like that? I'm assuming we're going to pay 200 grand for these people. There's no limitation on how or what they do, it just says, if they're onsite, we got to pay for them up to 200 grand.
No, no, it's, it's hourly rate, and they will have to provide daily logs, and, and to be honest with you, we're going to have somebody watching.
But if, I mean, if they're just, I don't know if they're carrying a two-by-four, or, you know, doing something significant, but if you've got, I'm assuming from their perspective, they're going to, they're going to use that time up. If you've got the, this, the ability to bill that kind of time without, I didn't see a limitation on that. If they were there and they're doing something, they get paid.
If they're doing something for us, they get paid. If they're working on the hotel or Baker, we don't pay.
Okay. Are, is it fair to assume they're going to come pretty close to that $200,000 mark, or?
You know, I don't think they will, but that's, we capped it out at that, and they think they might get close to that. We think, Dave French thinks it's going to be less.
Okay, and that cost is also included in that base bid price or base cap of 9 million?
Yes.
Is there anything, Gary, that we need to incorporate by reference? This Article 12 under scope of agreement kind of wipes out any other discussions or negotiations? I mean, is that, you've looked at that, I'm sure you're comfortable with that, that there's nothing else we need to pull into this to?
No, that's, all the exhibits cover that, the budget, the allocation of the site work, and so on. This, the insurance coverage, um, you know, I'm comfortable that everything we need, have to have incorporated in here, we have. And we've also incorporated Gresel's study by reference, and then lifted specific language out of it.
Bill or Gary, does document A201 handed out at the meetings for the commissioners, or no?
A201 is a, the general conditions, that is in front of you this evening. This is, um, as you, as you indicated, Commissioner Smasco, that, that is one of the accompanying documents, and it just covers many of the general conditions that we standard use for all of our contracts.
It's definitional, but it's also quite substantive. My question was, was this handed out to the commissioners? Okay, no, so, because I didn't get it, and one of my dotations was, "I want to see this thing," and here it is. And I have not, you know, I appreciate a little more time to look at. Are we going to, the idea is we're going to pass a resolution tonight on this, or are we just talking about this tonight?
We're passing resolutions.
All right, okay, I didn't-
I mean, we're going to, we're going to put a motion out.
All right, all right.
On the general conditions, we made many changes, and those are very similar to what you see in most contracts. But if there's anything of concern you have, call me or call Bill.
Yeah, once the, actually, I went out on the internet, and you made, I found the document, and I looked through it, it was, I mean, the internet is 80 pages, but it's, it was struck out, it was some form document that went into this document. And I'm looking at it, I just had, I just want to know how that fit in.
Actually, county has its own set of general conditions, and purchasing, and I did some of the cutting out of what they sent, the standard stuff, and then purchasing did more changes based upon how the county set of general conditions read. And actually, our set is kind of a cobbled-up, older AIA set, so.
I have two questions, last one, I think, is more for comedic relief than anything. But my second-to-last question is, I noticed that the signatory on the contract is not the designated representative of the Orion Two. Is that an issue or not an issue there? Who, who is Gary Postama, partner?
He's just one of the owners of Orion. But he's not the individual, the designated person who'll be out there on the site.
Roger Rencoff is not a principal, he's an employee?
No, he's a principal, too.
Okay.
But the guy who manages the office and prepared and negotiated the contracts is the other guy, the Gary, whatever his name is.
Sometimes I draft documents, and there's some name that has no application, I'm thinking, "Where'd this guy come from?"
I hear, I hear you, yeah.
All right. The other question, I just noted, I'm looking around at this stuff this afternoon, and I noticed you can go out on the website, and you can buy these documents, like this A33-209 for $12. Is that, is that, I mean, did we, do we have to buy this and then modify it, or how does that work?
Well, it's two things, you can buy it very easily, we have sets of all these in our office for different projects. The problem is if you want it in modifiable form, so you can take this document, pull it up and cobble it up like we did, you have to subscribe, and it's really expensive.
So, it's not copyrighted, I mean, like the SADO?
No, it's copyrighted.
The SADO forms we have, you know, you get that, and you can move them all around. But this document, I'm sure you, you're way ahead of this, it's not an issue that we didn't pay $12 for this base document or something, or?
No, Orion paid, they have the subscription, it is copyrighted.
I see, okay, all right.
And so, what we did is took what they sent us, and we kept marking it up until we got it done. Then they have the subscription, they, they modified it.
So, this AIA document came through Orion, you happened to use the same bank of forms, and that's where that started, so. That's it for me.
Okay, uh, David?
I just, because you just brought up a couple more questions, and it had to do with 3.1.3. And you eliminated 6.1, which then makes reference pretty much what the, the owner, which would be the county, can do out there above and beyond at our discretion, be included in the maximum price. That's what 6 covers there, that, if I understood reading that just now. It also makes reference to Article 15, and all of 15 has been deleted, claims and disputes. We don't have any protection for claims and disputes, either for them or us. What recourse do we have with the contract that doesn't have anything in there?
The claims and disputes language is covered in the general conditions that you have. What was in that is a requirement to go to arbitration. And we strike arbitration from all of our contracts, because it is not friendly to the owner. Basically, you have industry representatives that sit on the panels, and it's not fast, and it's not less expensive.
Where would claims and disputes then be in this contract that we're looking to approve tonight?
Basically, it's in the general conditions, claims for more compensation, that kind of thing. But in, in terms of claims and disputes, we go to wherever the law takes us, which is St. Clair County Circuit Court. What, what claims and disputes in this contract does is selects where your forum will be, which is arbitration, we deleted that. So, basically, if we have a dispute, a contractual dispute over a project that's being built in St. Clair County, we go right over there to St. Clair County Circuit Court.
Couldn't we have that language in here?
Sure.
Why don't we protect the county, just?
Well, that, that's where it would go, it's either arbitration or court, so.
It's not included currently in the contracts?
No, but it's, if it's not arbitration, it is St. Clair County.
It's a given.
It's a given, absolutely, certainly.
Terry?
Uh, Bill, on the information that we got yesterday on the AIA 133, there was a sheet on the back that said, uh, Exhibit D, which had to do with allocation, site work, and infrastructure. And I know the reason why we tried to negotiate that down, and I can, I appreciate what you did there, Bill, but I was curious, some of the things are two-thirds, one-third, some is 50/50, some is all. How did you, how did you come about with coming up with those figures, I wonder?
Well, we all said around-
Just let me just, just let me just further say, on the, on the utility portion, wouldn't that, you, I mean, it's, it's all the county. It's 315,000 for the county, is that typically the way it would be? Or wouldn't, wouldn't that be split up with culinary and?
Well, the, the utility issue is the movement of, um, the water and the sewer lines. Right now, the water and the sewer lines run through the middle of where the convention center will be. So, because the convention center is going to be built, all of those utilities need to be moved. And we felt it was fair, if they've got to be moved to support our building, we should pick up those costs.
Well, in a sewer scepter, in the sewer, in the sewer, you split it three ways, I'm, I'm glad to see that.
Correct, and that's because it serves the entire site, there are three people using the site, so it should be split three ways.
Again, good job on that, appreciate that.
Well, that, certainly, the, the engineers, the civil engineers were at that meeting to sit down and work through this. Orion was there to sit and work through there. Mr. Fletcher was there, Mr. French was there. It was something all of us worked on to, to come up with this split.
Thank you.
Any other questions on anything? Okay. Looking for a motion on item number three, resolution- I would make the motion to authorize the-
I would make the motion to authorize the closing authority for the documents pertaining to the St. Clair County Convention Center?
That's the next item.
That's the next item?
Yeah, we're looking for a motion to approve the construction...
Okay, to approve the construction manager contract for the Blue Water Area Convention Center, I would make that motion.
I'll support it.
Roll call.
Commissioner Samasco?
No.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
No.
Commissioner Greatap?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Five yes.
Okay, item number four, the resolution establishing signatory for all closing documents for the Blue Water Area Convention Center contracts, I have a motion and a second, I make that motion.
I would second it, let Commissioner London.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Samasco?
No.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
No.
Commissioner Greatap?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Five yes.
Moving on, item number six, receiving file report from Convergence Design and CSL, I have a motion.
I'll support that.
I'll favor. I suppose any other budgetary matters coming for us.
Could I just report on something that commissioners might be interested in?
Sure.
Regarding Park and Rec, their meeting tonight was out at Goodell's, and I, I'm the representative, I missed it, but the, you might be interested in this, thus far at the Lighthouse, they've had paid tour participants, 4,035 as of the end of July.
At five bucks apiece?
At five bucks a pop, they've taken in, their site income thus far has been 45, almost $46,000, and, and they've sold roughly $16,000 in gift shop revenue, they're doing, I think if you were to ask the Port Huron Museum people, they're doing a land office business there, they have to be really excited about it. The other thing that I found was kind of interesting in the report from Park and Rec, and that is the flow of traffic on a single day at the Fort Gratiot County Park, 390 cars. Must have been a hot day.
Before the tugboats sank.
Yeah, before the tugboats sank. Okay. Item number eight, a German.
I'll support it.
Second? On favor.
Aye.
I suppose. Jerry?